Hello everyone.
Hello.
Hello, good evening. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you so much for bringing your friends for coming. And thank you very much to the St. Frederick Catholic Church and Dr. Nicholas Morandu, oh, excuse me, Fathers Nicholas, Nicholas Morandu, for sharing this wonderful venue so that he can have our presentation this evening about something that's of interest to all of us, and that is the new homeless laws that are facing every state that's in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals jurisdiction, that includes Oregon, Idaho, and California, Washington, and before we go into them, also the new homeless laws that are being enacted by the state of Oregon, and then what St. Helens is going to do. So first, a disclosure. I'm Steve Entoski. I'm an attorney-in-law. I'm a citizen of St. Helens. And my lovely wife, Robin, she grew up here, raised here, she's a best friend of mine. And if it wasn't for all of our time we spent here in this wonderful place, I wouldn't be here. I'm glad I'm here. I care deeply about St. Helens. It's one of the most beautiful places on the planet. It's one of the most lovely communities, and that's why I'm working so hard to try to protect it and to keep the community informed. Now, some disclaimers. This is not a city council endorsed presentation. That means, it doesn't mean that they're not endorsing it, they just are not endorsing it. And it's not a, and it's not a planning commission endorsed presentation. It's not a business presentation. I'm not trying to get any case referrals or anything like that. This is a free speech presentation. And I wanted to go into my background with this law. So who am I? Why are you here? And a little bit about me. I do, as a living, litigation, defense, planning. So I am a trial lawyer, and I'm on the planning commission for 30 years. Before I did my $30 a month volunteer job in the city of St. Helens, I did litigation, planning, and strategy for problems facing clients with large problems across the state. And so how to deal with these sort of laws is something that kind of is in my wheelhouse. I was also in the wheelhouse of Charlie Kassner, who's one of my fellow planning commissioners. He works for Guy when he went to one of the best law schools in the country. And he and I, a bunch of other dedicated folks in the planning commission, worked very hard on something that's before the city council, they considered tomorrow, and we wanted to, I wanted to explain to you what it's all about and to answer all your questions. So first, we're going to do a presentation. Then we're going to do questions and answers. If anybody's here that wants to share some things, then I'll be happy to get some people to share some things. So, sorry for not having the PowerPoint and did the best I could, but here we are. So what is the problem? We have to designate a place where people can sleep and keep warm and dry. That is the problem. St. Helens right now has laws which prohibit somebody who is homeless or homeless, or anybody, for that matter, from just pitching a tent anywhere in the city. The problem is that under federal case law, in a case called Johnson versus City of Grants Pass, which came down this year, which was a case that followed another case called Martin Beasley, the law simply stated by the federal judges, the appeals judges, said, "We hold simply that it is unconstitutional to punish a person for simply sleeping somewhere in public if one has nowhere else to go." And so what happened in the city of Grants Pass was they had a law basically saying you can't sleep anywhere, they were writing legal tickets, and what the court said is that since you don't have a place with someone to go, we are going to hold your law invalid. And they invalidated all of the city of Grants passes. Public sleeping laws and the homeless population would legally debate the parks of Grants Pass, which I saw, and was a very bad situation there, and continues to be. The federal case law also made it clear that nevertheless, the law allows cities to set place, time, and manner restrictions concerning unsheltered camping. And by sheltered, I mean people who have no place to sit, couch surfing is not sheltered. But the person who says, "Hey, look, you've been couch surfing here, you gotta get out." That person is leaving with maybe nothing but a tent, they are now unsheltered. So they are unsheltered people. But place, time, and manner, so what, all of our lives are guided by place, time, and manner restrictions. The place is here between the hall. The time is now, 6:30. The manner is a presentation that I'm going to give with some food, and then we'll do a question and answer session. There are also some place, time, and manner restrictions that are sort of, you know, we're all, for example, clothing, thankfully, some will say, certainly for me, but there are also place, time, and manner restrictions concerning every part of our day lives, all construction, how this place is wired, the deans, all of these things are regulated. Same thing for place, time, and manner restrictions for where people are going to be able to stay, to sleep and keep warm and dry. Now, interacting with these federal laws, which now force us to make a spot for people. Question of people saying, "My God, what do they have to do for all people? What do we need to do if we're getting into that?" The state law says that it allows a homeless person to sue cities and counties to challenge whether place, time, and manner restrictions are objectively reasonable with regards to persons experiencing homelessness. So basically, any homeless person can sue the city and say, "I don't think your law is objectively reasonable," for whatever reason. What is objectively reasonable? Well, that's a very interesting standard. I think there is a legal standard, because reasonableness is something I think we all can differ about. But the cities are potentially going to get sued and sued a lot because of this law. As an experience determining, I view this law as one that has a great danger of abuse. And what is an injunction? An injunction is to basically say the law cannot, cannot go forward. Just one second. I know we turned all the fans off, but man, it's getting hot in here. Maybe we should turn it back on. I'll just shout it. And then the one in the back, too. Is that the still one down there? When I notice you're up here, it's gotta be bad for you guys. So what's, an injunction is basically says the law cannot be used. And so this is a very dangerous law, and it's one that's subject to abuse, but something So there's also another requirement, which is something that the planning commission did, this is another state law, is to develop a policy that recognizes the social nature of the problem of homeless individuals camping on public property, and to implement the policy as developed to ensure the most humane treatment will remove the homeless individuals from camping sites on public property. So this is also a state mandated law, which the city of St. Helens doesn't have. As far as I know, there aren't a lot of cities that have adopted this, but if the city of St. Helens goes forward with the planning commission law, which they're going to be talking about tomorrow at 2:00, there is a policy that recognizes the social nature of the problem of homeless individuals camping on public property. The way the planning commission approached this was a humanitarian way, it was a social way. And we did it because in doing so, it protects the city as far as the laws are being considered. So what's the method that we used to solve this problem? We approached the issue to develop a policy that recognizes the social nature of the problem, and we incorporated those findings under law being considered by the city council. And we found that in our investigation that the police and the public service agencies in the cities were already doing a great job interfacing with the homes. What we found is there's no complaints that the police are doing any, our plea, that the police, as a matter of fact, are interfacing with the people that come to our community to directly use services that we have, and that people are treated respectfully. And one of the reasons that we don't have a lot of calls from people here is because our police have done a great job, our social services have done a great job interacting with them. And so we've incorporated those things into our code. Okay, so now that we've decided to approach this as a humanitarian way and a social way, and we have to pick a place, well, the question is, where? Where should the places be? Where on public property? We have to identify a spot on public property. We have to. And the reason is that the court felt that as long as there's one person without shelter, they have to be able to give them a spot to keep warm and dry and survive. That's the law. And so if you build a thousand shelter units, and then one person walks in that doesn't have a unit, that person is entitled to find a spot to stay. So we're always going to be dealing with a group of folks that are in shelter now. And how do we comply with that law? Now, what our study recently revealed was that for many reasons, that wherever this place is on public property, it should not be in neighborhoods, it should not be in business districts, it should not be in parks, it should be not on trails, and it should not be on the waterfront, and it should not be 400 feet from houses. And there's a lot of good reasons on that. I spent like 70 hours on this. And the planning commission, as a group, has probably spent another 30, and we also met in subcommittee. So I can go through a lot of the reasons. There's a study that I authored, and I'm going to post on my Facebook page, and post a lot of grants and cases to secure citizens, so you can read the study. I'm not going to go through the whole thing. The bottom line is, it doesn't really ever work out when people camp in front of people's houses. And it doesn't ever work out when people can't in front of people's businesses. And it doesn't ever really work out when people can't in the parks. We know that. And so we said, "It's not appropriate." And also, it's a matter of our health, our mental health, and our safety and our welfare, that people just aren't camping anywhere. That when I drive down the street, or anybody's driving down the street, that they have the peace of mind to know that this is horrible, that suddenly there just isn't some tent and some stranger there. So we made it very clear in our ordinance that we, that the council is considering that neighborhoods, business districts, parks, trails, waterfront, aren't appropriate places. So the next thing we did in our study is, what is our load? What is our load of homeless individuals in the city? In other words, do we have 100 houses that are on public property currently? Do we have 50? Do we have 20? Since we have to designate a place on public property, how big of a place do we need? So I personally asked the police to show me every homeless camp in the city on public property, and I went to each and every one of them, and I saw a lot of places that where people used to be, and they were pretty trash. But when I looked around, and it was pretty rainy then, and it was cold, there was one guy, and he was sleeping under the bridge, throwing open loads of cream. Okay? So, okay, now people will say, "Well, we've got a lot more than one homeless person." But the fact of the matter is, is that the time that I did the survey, we had one, and there may be more someone in the county, and maybe someone private of the property, but we're talking about what does the public, what's on public property now, and what do we have to do as a, how much of our valuable public property can we be sacrificed? So we had one person, and the conclusion was, well, we don't need a lot of public property to put the people on, because we don't have a lot of people that need to go there. So we don't need acres and acres of property. We don't need to create something big. We need to create something appropriately sized. And so then we said, "Okay, which is at least 400 feet away from houses that isn't anywhere in parks, that's far enough away from businesses, that isn't anywhere on the trails, that isn't on our watershed, that isn't in our waterfall." So where is that place? And this is, I'll post this on my website, but, or not on my website, but this is actually, it's kind of a washed out map of the city. It's hard to see, but all these red areas are public property, and most of those red areas actually are parks. We have a lot of land that's in parks. And I was going to try and zoom this in, but I don't think it's going to work. So in looking at this map, and I'll post it on my Facebook page, and then you guys can see it, but there's really not a lot of public land that we have that isn't near residences, that isn't near businesses, that isn't in a park. So we look very, very carefully, and one thing, now, there's a space up on our road, but people, I know the city wants to develop that. That was a place that was going to be a hospital's place, and the city bought that land. Now, that's one spot that we can say can include this location, but I know that there's a current buyer that's trying to negotiate with the city to develop that property. And so I don't think it, we just thought that's not a good thing to just say we're going to put some people there. So what we decided that, after looking very hard and driving around, one of the best spots would be, I'm the police, the New, the Rex Center, which is actually going to be right by the new police station, and it's actually going to be behind where the police are going to have their offices. So this spot, which we said would be sufficiently sized at 100 feet by 100 feet, that's a 10,000 square foot lot, that is the size of one city lot in the city of St. Helens, okay? That's how much space we're talking about, because we don't need any more spaces than for 10 to 15 people. One, 10,000 square foot lot where people could stay for five days. That's what we're talking about. And then, I'm going to post this, too. And one of the spots we thought might be good, like Cascades, Tissue, down at the very end of Cason Road, I'm wishing you guys could see this a little better. I'll post this on the site, too, but it's, it's, actually a mark of this. So if you want to drive down Cason Road, and you want to take a right, and want to go all the way down, that spot's marked, you can see it. And, let's see. So there's 12 to 15 people, and no more than any, no more than 10 in any less spot. And maybe there's been, and the people we camp in the 12 by 12 foot area, and they can stay for a maximum of five days. And why would there be, why a maximum of five days? Well, that's the same amount of days as if we allowed yachts on the docks. So when you have, when the people come with their yachts in the summer, and they park on the docks, and they pay to park on the docks, they pay. They pay, and they pay for five days, and then they have to leave. And not only do they have to leave St. Helens, they have to leave our waters. They cannot just pull their yacht, their yachts off and park in front of our city and anchor. They must leave our area with their boats. So we're basically giving the same amount of time for somebody to sleep and keep warm and dry for their survival, as we give the boats who come here that are some of the wealthiest people, probably in the state. So it's fair, it's equalizing, and we think it's plenty of time.
Who monitors the time?
Pardon?
Who monitors the time?
Good question. All that question till the end. Okay? Who monitors it? Good question. And we're going to look for suggestions on that, because this is essentially the skeleton of the law, okay? But let's talk about that in a second. No littering, no fires, no destruction of property, okay? This is a place to survive and keep warm and dry. St. Helens is not required to create a long-term location for people to live. And you know, I think I'll take that question a little out of bounds. Who's going to monitor? Well, that's a very good question. There's no, there's nothing we've decided on how to structure that. That would be something that either the Parks Department or the Administrators Department would develop rules about monitoring and following up. But let's say, we have to create, we know we have to create space, right? We have to create space, and right now, we're going to create a space that has a time limit. So if we can create a space that doesn't have a time limit, then there is no time limit. Somebody can stay as long as they want. And so at least we're trying to enforce the time limit. And we are able to enforce the time limit on the city docks, because we implemented a program. There was a big homeless problem, people camping on the city docks. We implemented a policy there, and we were able to actually effectively get them off, and that's the city council did. So there are ways to do it. Eventually, if you get into too many warnings under our current, under this law, you can be arrested. Also, if you break other laws within this place, you can and will be arrested. When I met with the police department and the district attorney about how it was that we were enforcing our camping laws, they told me that we really don't use the camping laws as our method of law enforcement. What we use is the anti-littering laws. So what happens is, when people are hanging around, they, sometimes they litter, and what the people, what they do is they get arrested for littering. So this law specifically says no littering, so if you littered your place in a trashed place, you could be arrested.
So anyone that drives to us with their gable, they see no littering up and down those roads, so clearly we're not actually arresting people for that, or anything like that. So how are we going to enforce that?
Okay, so, we keep going the presentation, and then, and then, let me, let me just try to make sure that, let's just say this, there are a lot of challenges that we face, not all of which are going to be answered by this. But this is a law that we should enact, because it creates a structure that protects, essentially protects our homes, our businesses, our parks, and all of those. That is what this law does. How that law works is something that we need to say we want this law enforced. That's the message we need to bring, or we should not enact a law to begin with that allows somebody to sleep in our neighborhoods and our parks. So if you think about it, should we enact a law that says, "You can walk out tomorrow morning, and there is something camping literally in your street"? Not only one, but five? And the same problems with enforcement would exist there as anywhere else, except for one extra thing. Those people would say, "I have a right to be here. I can camp here. There's nothing that they can do to me." So that's, that's what we're talking about, is the choices. So, okay, that one again. So we don't have a homeless problem. That's what I heard. We don't have a homeless problem. That's not by accident. We did have a homeless water problem in the docks, which I've talked about. We armed our police with force, a law, a legal force of action, it works. We did have a homeless problem in the farming park, sleeping and littering, it made it unsafe and undesirable for our community. And our city council passed new legislation led by Councilman Morgan to not allow camping without a permit, and we armed our police force with a legal force of action, and that has worked. Homeless are no longer camping in farming parks. As a matter of fact, some people have put in a personal golf course there, they've improved the parks, and that's what's occurred there. We did have a homeless problem on Santa Island, and I think Toni's in here, and she can talk to all about the problems on Santa Island, and how they're trashing Santa Island. And our city government granted a concession regarding the island's management, and that has worked to manage the homeless problem there. So we can manage problems, and we have managed problems. And so the question is, how are we going to manage this new law? And how are we going to keep this new law from invading our neighborhoods where we actually live, since we have to create space? Public space, public spaces also arguably involve the park near your house, your street, your sidewalk. I mean, these are things that are actually, that actually the city, for a year, is considering opening up homeless camps for 24 hours. So, and that statue is before the city council tomorrow at 2:00, and that's one of the things they're going to discuss. Okay?
How are we going to enroll in five days? I mean, these five days, where are they going to go? Can they see you there? If you're taking a lot of work to go?
At the end of five days, you're going to, we want... Oh, okay. Somebody asked me that, what the question was, is that the end of five days, where do they go? Okay? And so here is the answer to that question. Wherever they want. And the fact of the matter is, is that when you treat people humanly, that means you are in charge of your life, okay? Just like I'm in charge of my life, and all of you are in charge of your lives, you as a human being, if you are not an incompetent person, you are in charge of their life. You decide how you guide your life, you decide where you go, you decide where you live, and you decide what you do. And so what this law does is it tells people, "We do not have a place for you to say, 'No, I'm taking you out of your job if you don't live." You can come here, try and find services, we will help you for five days, but we, this is not a place where you can come and live. And that's all understood, and it may sound, it may sound a little forward thinking, which is what I'm about to say, because our governor is now putting $200 million into Portland and to Salem and into Eugene. And so what for the people, to help the people to go out there? Build houses, drug treatment, all the things that were reported, multi-millions of dollars. And what do those folks say? Gee, I don't want that today, I'm just going to leave. And let's say 100 people roll up at the St. Helens tomorrow on buses, and we have no law to cap them. What happens then?
Okay, I live over on Good King, and there are, there's a valley there towards the Mitchell. There have been homeless problems there for a while. My concern is the wildlife. I have watched two theaters here cook. Now, with the garbage that was left behind, it still remains. Our city department, or the city, you know, whoever's in charge of the city, it has not been fully done. So the garbage and the littering still remain. I live here 2020, and that still remains, so that's still a kind of problem for me. I have to stare out my window and see all of this garbage that remained from a homeless camp in 2020. So now, my concern is though, the wildlife, one of the wildlife that have been mentioned in our city.
That's a good question. So one of the questions was, it's a couple of things. One is, we're going to riff this a little bit, we got questions to answer at the end, I'm just going to riff a couple of these. So one of the questions was, the people are gone, there's garbage there, or maybe the people, there's garbage there, animals are injured, and I'm really worried about the wildlife. And those are valid concerns. And so one of the places that's selected, in fact, the place that is selected is 10, I mean, it's 100 foot by 100 foot. I mean, it's, it's literally about double size of this one. That's the entire size. Okay, that spot is in a parking lot right now, and it is not going to trample on any wildlife, it's not going to, not going to endanger any wildlife now. If we decide, if the city decides to pick a place that's, let's just say, out in the boonies somewhere, where wildlife is near, and they don't cap the numbers, and they don't cap the days, then you can get hundreds of people that move into this wildlife area and completely destroy the environment. And that's, and so that is a valid concern, and that is another reason why to urge the city to essentially go forward with this planning commission, which is a very contained place, that this is a spot, you get five days, you don't get to go, you know, hundreds of people can't show up and go to the, go into wildlife, and so it does protect wildlife. In fact, one of the kind of controversies is, what about should we buy a toilet? And I said, and we've said yes to buying a toilet, and this is an outhouse, and the reason is that people are going to have to go, we're talking about five nights, who's going to have to go? And so by putting an outhouse there, the people have a place to go. An outhouse, I recently did something with my house, had an outhouse there, cost me $125 a month for outhouses. And so, and there's a dumpster there. So there would be facilities for people to use. Okay, let's see, we're not in a presentation. Okay, so one thing we've learned in the past three years with COVID is, is that things can occur in terms of rewards in an unimaginable way. No one would have imagined the lawless, deadly violence and destruction that occurred in Portland three years ago. I could not imagine a downtown area that was so beautiful in Portland five years ago is now in the condition that's in. We have to be ready legally for trying to have airtight local legislation to prevent our city business districts and the quiet enjoyment of your property. We need to have a place for the homeless to go if they show up, but if we don't give them that eight place, then it's every place. And so I'm supporting the mark designation that the council is considering. And one of the things that I'm trying to get people to do is to look at some other laws, other directions the council may go, and to make sure they don't go in that direction. The city of Radiator is seriously considering, I don't know if they've adopted it or not, but an ordinance that will allow... but an ordinance that will allow 24-hour sleeping, pitching a tent on all public property. That includes, except for public property in front of their city hall, in the courthouse, by the street. That's on the council agenda, to talk about tomorrow. And what I'm concerned about is the council may just say, "Look, we just want to build what Rainier did." And that means, literally, the homeless or anybody that's got the right to pitch their tent in your, on your street. They would have the right to pitch their tent in front of the businesses in our city. They would have the right to pitch their tents in the parks, in, in all places. And the gentleman that talked about, um, the wildlife, I went around, took some pictures of the places where people could have their tents pitched right now. There's tons of camisoles, there's beautiful areas where they're going to pitch all over the place. Um, it doesn't limit the number of people, and it does, it all limits the, the days. And, um, one person here expressed my thoughts about the days, and that being something that's difficult to enforce. It's true that it is very difficult to enforce time limitations. And so, saying that you only get 24 hours, that's just a time limitation that's going to be difficult to enforce. Why, why would the city pass a law giving people the right to sleep in the front of your house? Why would that law ever have to pass?
Well, regardless of the law, they're going to do it anyway. I talked to a previous councillor on the Columbia, and he told me that already, we know there's over 100 people in St. Helens. You're telling me we don't have a problem? There's 100 people around here, and you can pass any law you want, about guns, about people, about whatever. What happens when you're inundated with all of these people coming across the border and all over the place? What are you going to do about a law? It doesn't matter. It's inevitable, it's coming.
Uh, okay.
Well, okay.
Well, yeah, okay, so the question is this. It doesn't matter who passes this law, because it's going to happen anyway.
Exactly.
Okay, all right, well, so tomorrow though, is the day we try, our council decides which law to pass, okay? And so, here I'm thinking about that, okay? So I'm thinking about, I walk out, and I've got my daughter playing, and my son playing in front of my house, and my neighbors are all waiting to each other, and suddenly eight people come in, and they start pitching their tents in front of mine.
Yep.
In front of my house. And I say to them, "Excuse me, you cannot pitch your tents here, where are you going there?" And they say, "We have the legal right to pitch our tents here." Because if we pass a law allowing it, that is exactly what they will have, is their legal right to do it. Pardon? Rainier, right now. It's the same time, your city council is thinking about potentially passing that law tomorrow.
It'll happen.
It's on the agenda.
It's inevitable.
You know what? I'm not giving up, man.
No.
You know what? We just roll over and give up, and, and, or we just continue with what we've been doing all along. You know, I'm not giving up because I've seen us succeed, and I believe in us now. I've, I've seen us succeed, and I believe in us, and we won at San Island, we won at the corner park, uh, we won in all of our neighborhoods, we won. We are different than the other places, and we're going to continue to be.
Thank you.
Even though some people may feel like, it's very frustrating. Yes?
I want to, I want to tell you, I appreciate you.
Yes.
I appreciate the fact that you're trying to foster a law that at least provides some structure and control around this situation.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
We're doing the best we can.
But I also find it to be so much of, somewhat of a surrendering approach versus taking on the Ninth Circuit, taking on the state of origin for this county and this city's rights to control their own laws, and not be bribed, and not be forced, and not be, uh, I feel like the, and maybe I'm completely off base here, but my guess is, they probably talked about removing state and federal funding if we don't acquiesce, is that correct?
No, no. Okay, so the question is, why are we fighting the Ninth Circuit law, and why aren't we fighting the state law? And, um, are we being paid to acquiesce and to develop this law? And so, um, as far as the Ninth Circuit is concerned, that case is going to the Supreme Court, or at least they tried to, we are not in part of the City of Grants passes. And as a matter of fact, just to let you know what the City of Grants passes are against, they're up against like the Coalition of the Homeless in Washington DC, from San Francisco, from Los Angeles, from Miami. They had brief after brief after brief to crush on this issue, crush, try to crush the City of Grants pass. So, I, I think as much, you know, we could lend our support, maybe hire an attorney, and spend money to try to brief that issue. I'm not sure if that's the best case to use, and there's a lot of complex reasons for that, maybe discuss them later. And so, then the next question is, what about the state law? I don't like this law, but having to study it for 70 hours, and having to actually develop a solution to it, I actually think the law is actually kind of ingenious in a way, and the governor's actions have actually shown me a different path. Because the law says, if you incorporate this humane approach, you are immune from suit. So that's why we incorporated this humane approach, because to remove homeless people. And so, then when the governor reached office, that, there was a mayor's proposal that was out, that every city should get $14,000 per population to help them deal with the homeless and all the issues that they have to deal with. Every city wanted money. And the governor said, "No, we're not going to spread the money around. What we're going to do is we're going to focus our money where the homeless are already." And so, I think one of the things that this allows us to do is, if you say it's a humane approach, we're developing legal concepts of barriers, barriers to anybody just coming in and saying, "We can stay here." Because the types of people that need help are mentally ill, and drug addicted people, those are the, most of the people that are the homeless. Maybe, of course, we've got the drifters and the drifters and the hustlers, and they aren't going to want to sleep anywhere anyway, except for if they can sleep in your neighborhood, they'd be happy to, because there's more of them to go, or whatever they're going to get there, they're going to do. But those people, you know, they, they live their life, and then, of course, you have the folks that are just downtrodden poor. Those are the folks that actually can help, okay? But we have this huge chunk of our population, unfortunately, they are part of our body. It's just like, uh, you know, we are, imagine the whole society as a community, and this, these, these folks are part of us, okay? Well, how do we help them? Well, I, I, we can say, we're going to put resources in, but these are resources that are going to cost a lot of money. They're going to cost trained people, people who can deal with drug addiction, people who can deal with people with mental illness, people that are, you know, that they can understand and deliver these services. We cannot possibly have all of the services spread in every community throughout the state. And so, I think what the governor is doing is saying, it's okay to put the barriers up in their communities, because we're going to put the money in these places, and as human beings, we're expected to even go there. We are not, if, we're trying to help you here. If you want to run away from the health care community, that's your problem. But that doesn't mean you have a right to come stay in another city. You, you know, you have a right to go where you can go. You've made choices in your life. You know, you've decided to prioritize drugs over all things in your life, that's why you're on the street. You've made those decisions. And so, when you come down to, you know, why isn't that we're not fighting in a way, I think that this legal approach is actually a very good one, and it's a novel one, and it's one that I think is very forward to protect communities like ours. Put up barriers, say we have limits, you can't go here, we should be right back. Um, so, okay, let me see what I got, I got, see if we got any more questions. Uh, okay, so where else? So we designated an area that is not well-defined, and doesn't have a time limitation, and doesn't cap the number of people, and it could become a large, uncontrolled, unregulated homeless camp. That's, that's the main issue on there. Um, okay, so then, somebody has their hand up. Yes?
Hi, I'm Lisa Erickson, and I live in Los Angeles, California. I'm a resident, and I'm a member of the National House. We have the largest park in Congress coming in, across from Walmart, and we are growing with the bike and our mom. Our number one services that we offer out here, it's CPMH, and we give our friends to promote our community development. The reality is these people are here, they can all find the services, whether it be the community action team, whether it be the CPMH, whether it be the state, or the community, or the, or the, or the, stay here. Now, folks, this problem is not going away. It's my impression, I'm not a jury, Steve, that's his department, but we have no intention of saying that helps them. I understand a lot of people are working around this, but the reality is, is almost all of you can have my attention in this community. And if you're saying you are, you're full of shit. So, the reality is, is this stuff isn't our bad, no, so I need to all keep it here, better like this, and a few, and, um, it raises my eye.
Who are you, you judge? Whoa, 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 wait, 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 let's, let's, let's go talk, hold on. Wait, so what is your plan? What is your plan?
My plan is to...
Okay, what's your plan?
And those, my, 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 because we, like, there are people, and I'm already in close to that side. So we have a purpose for how many states we have, right?
That's correct.
But you have to... I, I believe 17,000 people. And so, I'm not just trying to become a citizen, I'll, I'll find myself, and give myself money that, and, and...
That's a long time.
So, you know, I'm trying to bring in the CEO of the, my, my, so, the reality, if I want to, I want to just put it in me, and, you know, you've got the children, and it's not being a law.
Okay, okay.
And so, I'm, 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 I'm,[1389.62] Okay, if we are the ones who are in the situation, or if we need to have a public service during the...
Well, let's, let's just say this, that we are hitting way above our weight, as far as the city is concerned, with the passion we carry. We have a lot of services, we have a lot of subsidized housing, we have a lot of help for people, and that includes people with addiction. If there's anybody in this room that has had problems with addiction, you know it's about choices, and you know how hard it is. And so, you know, saying to people, you are a victim, and, you know, you can be cared for, you know, honestly, it really takes people to make those strong steps for themselves.
Yeah.
Everyone knows that, who's having some trouble struggling with addiction. Um, and so, this isn't about not delivering services, this is about protecting, this is about a law that we have to comply with, and whether we pass a law that allows people to be on the street in front of our house, or someplace in the light industrial area, which is the area where they're in. So, this is generally for me.
But, I'm going to say on the, here now, uh, you know, what I understand at the beginning was, if a poor person doesn't have shelter in the city, and I'm going to say we're going to have a place that's hundred dollar, I use a ball, they're a four meter. Now, the rules here, sometimes we get ten, sometimes we get twenty five.
Right.
So, what happens if we have an overflow, when that hundred dollars is, is very, very high, but it's not very... What happens if we get an overflow, and now we're going to sue, or are we going to bump up?
How are we going to deal with the overflow? If that occurs?
No.
Is the question?
Let's just say it.
You answered your question about what we are going to do. You ran around the whole block, you never answered the question. What we are going to actually do, what is the consequence if you don't leave? Because if they cut the scaffolds, we got the same home, we got it right here, it's going to be this. It's going to be this, honestly. And then, it's going to be print, and I'm recovering, very active alcoholic, who's probably on the stand the whole day. But the bottom line is, this is going to get out of control, and our kids, and us, everybody else, good behavior. It all sounds very good, but it ain't going to drive us, period.
Okay, so, so my question is, how do we, uh, I know it's not going to work, but here's the question. I mean, if we have to pick a spot, where would you pick?
Portland.
Well, okay, all right, so...
Portland's already a mess, and they're not going to clean up.
Okay, hang on, hang on. Okay, so, the thing is about not working, um, you know, I can say this.
The overflow.
Let's not pass a law that allows people to sleep in our streets, our parks, and our waterfloods. If, if we have to make more space for people, because, I don't know, if people with a gun in their head, they sue us, they say we got to do something, it's not in our street, it's not in our parks, it's not in our waterfront. If even that means we got to create an anchor somewhere in town, because it's got to be in town, but it's not on our streets, it's not in our parks, and it's not in front of our businesses. That is the point. So, it may not work, it's not a perfect solution, but I can tell you, it's a better solution than having people camp in front of your house.
Yeah.
And, and that goes further than you.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, I say...
I agree.
So, as far as the, uh, expectation of warm and dry, and anything like that?
Right.
Do you, do you have any idea what they're saying about the building, the structure? Is there any details?
Right now, it's a ten, it's basically, we haven't specified any...
So, what is the structures, is the question?
They are responsible, which, whatever it is themselves, they have responsibility.
Because it looks like it said we need, we're responsible to keep them warm and...
Not to keep them, we have to provide the place for them to get themselves warm and dry out of the...
Yeah.
We do not have to take care of them, they're getting beans, and they're not, they're charging themselves.
Yeah.
And so, we don't have to, we don't have to care for them. Okay, we just want to make sure that this is not something to say, something comes in, and they're cold, and they're wet, we've got to give them a blanket or a tent. No, that's our expectation of you. Now, I'm sure there's a place in St. Albans, that somebody really is that at all, frankly, I'm sure they can already get some...
You know, that's just...
Wait, 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 I want this done, Mary, you got a chance, wait, hold on, just, hold on.
Have you, have you talked to the police and the sheriff?
Have they talked to the police and the sheriff about this?
I have not talked to the sheriff, but I have talked to Chief Greenway, who stated that they actually like the idea of the small spot behind their, uh, behind the Red Center. And the reason is, because when he was in Las Vegas, um, they, uh, they had a similar place, and allows the people, the police are patrolling, it's right by the police station, they can drive their cars right into and out of it, they can keep an eye, an eye on what's going on there. So, the police actually were quite in favor of the location that was selected, the by their station, because they said they could keep an eye on it. Additionally, the other spot by Cascades, when I was out there marking the space, the security guard came over and said, "What are you doing here?" And I said, "They're looking, marking off some space, because I wanted to demonstrate attention, and I think of the spot they're talking about, in case people come by." And he said, "Oh, that's great, because we do twenty-four hour security for Cascades, we're trained to deal with the homeless. And what we could do is just tag on to Cascades' contract, and we could monitor this place twenty-four seven." So, the two places that we have actually identified, the planning commission, and the two places that are for closure, are places that can be controlled twenty-four seven by the St. Albans Police and Security. So, that, that is the answer. And that's, that, and, and the place down in the interland, I haven't talked to people about that. And, and one of the concerns is, if it does go way out there, then it becomes violating the control, and there's an issue. Uh, question?
Is there a time limit? I mean, we're talking about five days that they could stay, and, and have a place to keep. Is there a time limit before they can come back? Because like the gentleman up here said, well, if we do this in Step Ruth, and we do this here, and we do this in Columbia City, right? And we do this in Goebel, there's kind of a line, right? So, is there a time limit before they can come back? And who's monitoring, who's staying where, and when? How are we documenting?
Who's monitoring, monitor?
Yeah. Okay, so, question one is, question one is, um, uh, is there a time limit? Yes, five days in total. So, once you, now unless you get shelter, of course, you don't have to leave town, but take camp, and you've got to leave the city five days in total. Who's going to monitor it? That's a problem, but who's going to monitor, monitor? I don't know, maybe we form a volunteer group, we have a body. I don't know the details of it, but I do need, know it needs to be monitored, and people need to be told, you have five days. And when they need, when they tell me, something needs to happen with them.
It needs community action.
And we need to have a population, and we need to enforce our laws. How we do it? Let's leave that to the police, let's leave that to the details. Again, let's not give up. I know it's going to be hard, and it's something we have been having a long time, so we're going to...
No one's addressing the financial impact this is going to have on our communities. What, how is this going to increase our taxes? We're going to have to have increased police patrol, if there's any monitoring to do. And we're going to have to have increases in, okay, now somebody's got to clean it up. Who's going to do that?
Okay, so there are increased costs to the community. So, let's just say we don't go to camp, let's just say we, we pick someplace out, let's say by Mallard Road, we just say, "That's where you can go," and...
No, I'm saying, it's for that spot, you have one spot. It still is going to have a financial impact on our communities.
I agree.
It has to be taken care of, and there are social programs for drug addiction and mental health, and it's going to increase that in our communities. Are you really going to be able to keep it to ten or fifteen people? Is it only the people in our community, or are they going to start bussing up from Portland?
Let's say they start bussing in Portland, is it, is it the, should we make them a market property, the space where they could be in, and we don't? We just make a spot, let it just...
No, it's affected the same way.
No.
Pardon?
Those people's homes will be affected the same way?
Okay, so, so, it will cost money, and maybe there will be grants.
Oh, you know, I know about the federal government, all of a sudden, there's no money in that grant program.
Okay, well, you know, I would like to say it's going to be free, but I have to say this. I think not doing something is way more expensive.
I agree.
And, and I think that having people come into our communities and camp within our streets is going to be hugely expensive. It's going to, people are going to trash our, our, uh, streets, that the neighbors are going to live in fear, the police are going to be constantly called out, there's going to be problems everywhere in the city, with all these people camping and acting like, like, you know, unfortunately, the kind of people they are, that need help. And the police, then, the flip side of the point is, if we don't try and manage it, and we, we pass a law that means they will be everywhere, that's, that's going to be an expense that's a hundred times worse, because they're running around all the time. In fact, in Portland, when we studied this, what we found is, the police were so overwhelmed by the number of calls they were getting, they had only responded to the most urgent calls.
I'm aware of that, I lived in Portland, I moved out here to get away from that.
There you go.
I'm not disagreeing with coming up with something, we've got to protect not only our community, but also the taxes. I was paying ten thousand dollars a year for taxes in a really great neighborhood. I do not want to see that happen here. You know, you lived here, you know what the, the median income of people in this area have, and how many retirees there are, and how many people that are in a lower income bracket.
You, you just touch up, okay? So, I think it interests me, questioning about the camp, and the resources, and the cost of doing it differently. I can't, we can't talk about taxes in general, like how it's going to go. Uh, this is generally...
Well, how about the legal side of that?
What?
How about the legal side of that? We know who they are.
Okay, so, the legal side is, there we go, and I know about...
We know, I mean, what are we going to do, if we didn't know who they are?
Okay, so, the legal side, how do we know who they are? Frankly, I think the legal side, the ACLU has a twenty-four hour, city ban, issued a twenty-four hour restriction, like the city grain, grain, or something like that. And that's the model city ban. They already have a letter from ACLU that they're going to sue the city ban. So, you know, if we adopt a sleep anywhere and twenty-four hour model, we're going to get the ACLU. Okay, that's probably not a good thing. Um, I think that we have, we're much more reasonable in our approach with the five days. I think it's, it's really difficult to justify a twenty-four hour movement requirement with somebody that's physically trying to survive, it's going to learn, you got to get up, you got to move over there. And so, I think it's going to be lawyers recruiting, most of the cases are going to be lawyers that are recruiting homeless, that pay fifty bucks on that, and then suing the city and trying to shake the city out of money, um, with attorney suits, because the firm, depending on the case, and so forth, and so, that there's a payoff. Which is why, I've been in a legal strategy here, which is why we've done this humanitarian grant, which provides us an offense to have the case thrown out of court. It's a very advanced answer to, and I was hoping to keep it simple, so, I, you know, if you want, I'm going to post my name, phone number, whatever, I have to ask, answer more questions about the legal strategy.
But, I think you have to, if you didn't know who they are...
Who do we know who?
The homes are, so, like, because you have people like, you have...
Oh, oh, okay, how do we know they are? Well, that's another question. Now, right now, in the proposed laws, there should be a registration process to go into, into place. So, you need to register. And so, I will, tomorrow, when I do my speech, because I've been asked to speak before the city council tomorrow, as part of the planning commission, tell them that one of the concerns was registration. In fact, I got a call today from the press, saying, at one point, um, at one point, I heard you said that you thought you may want a DNA sample of the people. And I said, and I said, "Well, yeah, I mean, we're talking about who are these people, where do they come from? They don't have ID, how do we know? This is for safety."
Yeah.
While people were, you know, people laughed when you did, and that thing just got kind of shot down. But, so now, I think the law is about registration. So, there is, there is a potential part for registration, I don't want to counsel without...
And who's going to monitor?
Well, uh, something. Okay, I don't want to speak to the city, and I can't speak to the city. I do know, and not that it's being proposed by the city as far as I know. I do know that there are two ordinances that the city council is currently considering, the planning commission proposal, that's what they are considering. On the agenda item, there is also the Rainier ordinance. And so, the city council could easily say, "Well, we just want to adopt the Rainier ordinance, because that looks good to us." I don't think they'll do that, I should certainly hope they will not do that. And that's part of the reason why I had this meeting, because I really want our community, I want the city council to understand, our communities, we understand that you have a really tough job ahead, to comply with this law. We do not want people, we do not want you to pass a law allowing people, giving them the legal right to camp in our neighborhoods, to camp in front of our businesses, to camp in our parks. That is the sole message that I want to bring to the city council, and that is, do not adopt the Rainier law, do not do something like that. Okay, you, what's that?
How about over five days, they say they're at the point?
What's that?
After five days, they say they're at the point, what happens on day six? Do we have a show that has to run that down?
Okay, so, okay, so...
Or you're going to allow the police to enforce that law?
All right, so, okay, after five days, so, I'm not sure how the details appear. But let's say this, first is a warning, next is twenty-five dollars, third is missed the year. But let's, let's say this way, we've asked you along, granted, we have given you your warning, you haven't lived. And, um, we are, um, now inclined for twenty-five dollars, you have lived. Are you saying that person isn't delivering one bit? Are you saying that person isn't stepping out of line somewhere else? I am sure that they are out of line somewhere else, and our police are going to deal with it. This is exactly how we're going to deal with the situation, because now, that we are going to deal with it, that they are going, we are going to enforce our laws. And when these folks that are not welcome here, and are not legally here, uh, break laws, our laws are going to be enforced. That's all we can do, is tell our police, like our police said, what we need is we need, um, clear, hopefully, not clear, it's a word. What we need is clear and concise instructions from the city council. And what I say in answer to Chief Greenway's request is, enforce our law, enforce our law, enforce our law, enforce our law. And that's what they need to hear from each and every one of you too. We want our laws enforced, we want you to enforce our laws. That's what they need to hear, that we support you. We're not about the unnameable police, we're about giving you the equipment and the resources you need. We have a jail here that has spaces, which gives us one huge advantage over Portland, uh, because Mobile County Jail is, is, is full. And so, here, the jails are relatively empty, so you actually can arrest them in here and bring them to jail, which is a real threat if your person tried to get here. And they realize in the next three days, they're going to end up going into jail. So, when the police say, "Hey, look, it's either to jail or to weed, and you body it in this law, or maybe they'll just arrest you."
I guess my point is, if we have a jail, it's, it's, our name is...
You know, same way they came in, this is our responsibility, this is a humane approach, okay? They're in charge of themselves, they're not like children, that are, you know, they're adults that know how to move around, they know how to get anything out of their cars, they know how to do things. That, these are people who definitely know their way around the law. Um, yes?
Yep.
All right. Leave without signing with petition, please. Yes, it's going to affect my child law, it'll be passed next month. Okay, I'm cooperating. Okay, so my suggestion, mostly, what's that? This is city ordinance, and so my suggestion for people living in county, and even other cities is, our approach is one that I think is a good one. You may be studying, figure out how to live, be identified in place, you can become a planner. Different communities are going to have different, um, different issues. The county definitely has way more, let's see, than the... Okay, let me, let me answer your question. So, this is really about city laws and county, something, absolutely. But, I had a hard time, we had a hard time putting up a law for the city, which we spent like a hundred hours on it, and that's what's on the table right now for tomorrow, um, literally tomorrow. And, uh, yes, generally?
I think what you're hearing here, obviously, is a lot of people's concerns, and, um, they're very unhappy about this entire scenario, we're sitting here, we're getting a very unsavory law, eleven hour, we can go fight, there's what we're looking at. And so, I get, I get, I feel, all these questions, which we have a lot of answers to, it's always way too many, right? What do you need from us? We're basically looking at the lesser of two equals at the moment. I still say we go to that, and we fight against the law down for the long term. Now, for today and tomorrow, what do you need from us? Support some control over this unsavory law.
First thing I need is for everyone that's here to gather around and sign this petition, because I want to get a, go to the city council tomorrow, and say, at this meeting, the people have spoken loudly and clearly, whatever law the city adopts, do not pass a law allowing people to camp on our streets, in our parks, in our neighborhoods, in front of our businesses, on our waterfront. These are the places that we all use for rest, and, and get back and forth. We want to have safe places for our children to play, we don't want strangers coming in our neighborhoods and hitching tents. Um, don't want, we don't want to be able to walk that waterfront, and not have much tents down there hanging out. Do not give the legal right to do that, which is exactly what this petition says, that's number one. Um, make that matter clear. And then, number two, honestly, to tell you the truth, and I'm here to say, I think we have a warning ordinance. I, I made my career in lawsuits, okay? I think we have the, first of all, that everything, well, I heard something else, they're afraid that when people hear you're camping, and you're getting upset. But, the thing is, is that, how exciting would you be if you go, okay, it's not that you're camping, but it's in your neighborhood, it's in your neighbor's neighborhood, it's in your park. It's on the waterfront, it's everywhere, we're infected everywhere. You, you chose to, to put it everywhere in the city unlimited, versus putting it on light industrial land, off, off in the area that's away from all of us, you chose to do that? I, that needs to be something that they need to hear, clear, not heard. How will you react if they pass a law tomorrow that says, "It's your legal right to be here"? They need to know that.
Great.
Need to know that, need to know that. Uh, so, I have some other questions. All right, Debbie, just one second. Uh, I will add that, I'm seeing this more, we wouldn't have schools. One of the things in looking at our, like, the bar, there's a school that is, this law would have sent that, but I don't know why we wouldn't have schools, so, yes, I would agree with that, yes. So, I would, I would suggest the council would open the schools tomorrow, when I, when I speak to them, this council.
Well, I, I love her, I think about schools, I've sat here thinking about them the whole time, and we're talking about, about children. Everybody, you, lots of the teachers, you're in, and, schools, absolutely. But, you said you want to, behind the classroom, right? All, all, all of us, but there are children there, right? So, under the beach, there are children, right?
That, that's...
I, I would be part of the closing, so, everything, there are children, there are...
So...
I don't understand.
Okay, so, it's ten fifteen, it's, it's ten fifteen people, and it's, you can fence it, and then it's the street, and...
That's what I would do, if you said, and everybody knows right now, that if people are coming in, have a little, that's for addiction, we don't want any of that, you know, for children. We don't want our children exposed to any of that. Why would, why would we go over our children to, to, to that?
Mallard Road, a hundred foot by hundred foot on Mallard Road. I mean, honestly, there are different places that we can choose that aren't in that location. One of the locations, one of the reasons for that location was, first of all, this isn't the end of camp. If people step out of line in this place, we're going to bust them.
They may not start this one, right? We're essentially, we're both in it, right? We're, we're selling, like, "Oh, you can camp here," right?
For five days.
For five days, and five, five days. If you decide to five days, we'll give five, five days, we can't say.
Five days, I mean...
We got something, and we got to move on.
Five days, I mean, all right, let me ask you this, let me ask you this. Where would you put it? You don't want, where?
It's the border, right?
The border, the choice, you don't want the choice. We don't want the choice. It's got to be in the city. And that's the news, because, because that's the, in product of the city, leases, owns, manages. I mean, we can lease a spot in Portland and say, "That's where they go," but, no, I mean, I think it's got to be within the city limits, I'm not sure if I can get it for mine. Probably works probably where.
I don't think it works around here.
Well, you know, I, I would say that other folks have said, you know, obviously, they're worried about the ball fields, or, and, 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 you know, that's a place we've been mucked with. Um, if we can find another hundred foot by hundred foot spot that fits the bill, um, then that would be a spot. So, you know, right now, it's just messing the board with a spot. Ready?
The border is a part of the area out of that, because we've not always been known from the city council here, and specifically, we're not happy with the place, so that just needs to be aware of. In addition, the city council reviewed this ordinance two weeks ago, and specifically, they said they did not like it, absolutely changed, absolutely nothing changed to it, because they didn't like the location that was specified, they did not like it. Specifically, they said... Specifically said, they didn't want that to be the location.
Actually, it was...
Well, they did not, not train their ordinance, I said they did not like training their ordinance. So, while we might be doing it, and they accept that they did not like that ordinance. Finally, we, the whole, the whole person that is happening, we have one homeless person, we actually deserve it. We don't have that homeless person. We have literally tons of homeless people. And if you think that, like, doesn't make it a spot that only 15 people, and our police are gonna place it and arrest it, they don't arrest it, they don't arrest people that they can't legally convert. If you think they're gonna arrest someone for camping, you're crazy. It's not gonna happen.
Alright, I am crazy.
It's bad, it's more than 15 people.
Okay, hold on a second, I got a question for you. So, the question is more escaping. And so, here's the question, where do you want to sit this 150 people, where's it be? Should be in our neighborhood? Where is it? From Malard Road, okay, there you go. Okay, that's another vote from Malard Road. So, let's just do it, and do it there. Honestly, the reason why we didn't do it there, number one, there's some residences out there, but I think we actually find a spot out there. And, uh, number two, that, and the city wants to develop this. The city's gonna probably say, "We don't really wanna put it there, because we have to develop, we're interested in buying it." And what I would go, how to say, it's people that don't want their kids, and the street of the city may be a lot bigger, let's not put it there in the first place.
How are they gonna get there on Malard Road?
Honestly, I'm not ready for that spot. This is a spot we checked out, and people, city council, I'm saying. Uh, that's the second time that's come up. Is there any money? No, no, that's not. No, no, she asked me anybody. Is there, what do we have money? Okay, right now? Now, the city is saying, "I'm so far as far as I know, it's not a city that I'm gonna stake." However, maybe we should send them the bill, because I think that our, I think it's sounding like a million dollars a neighbor, uh, property now, so... That's correct? Well, that's correct.
So, say we have a day where 20 people are standing there. Those people are letting them on the stage right there, then they're on things, then those people are preparing to, I mean, not alter, because they're not, they're not fair. And then they'll have, say, they'll have a left, and how about we do that?
Good question. So, the question is, if it's not enough space, then where do they go? And, and so, um, number one, I don't think that, right now, the, the analysis is, we don't anticipate any influx, because the same kind of forces that are happening, people being where they are, will keep them there. There's a reason why we don't have a lot of people here. If the people were getting what they get in Portland here, maybe we'd... Um, so, I don't think creating a small space that people can stay for five days is a force. We don't anticipate that's gonna cause any influx. But, perhaps, if, if there is an influx, we should do this, we should have a plan B, maybe a secondary space, and say, we should have another space in reserve, so we have more space than, than this small space, or, relative to this small space. So, I would suggest that to the city council tomorrow, and in fact, I know that the council has already discussed, uh, in a public meeting, they've said, "Let's make sure that we have spaces in reserve, in case, you know, somewhere where these spaces can..." Okay, they're not gonna be in our neighborhoods, they're not gonna be in our parks, and they're not gonna be on waterfront. Okay, alright, well, I'm gonna get, try and get more space in reserve. Don't predict the sign of the petition. Yes? Yes? Yes, and I am as a planning commissioner. No, tomorrow is just, we, we should, the council should have decided, and they might just make notice of it tomorrow. And then they say, you know, I think what tomorrow's probably gonna happen, especially after they hear voices here, they're gonna say, "Okay." You know, there's no good choices here. What we're gonna do here is, we're gonna go with the planning commission proposal, and then, and then, and then I'm gonna say, there are some additional things that we need to consider. One is, what if you don't have enough space, and should create reserve space? And that was a concern, so you don't use that number. Two, schools should be added to the, specifically to the, um, to the place. There are concerns about our children playing, maybe we should be looking at a place more remote. Um, council's gonna get to make tough choices, but I will bring that up. Um, and, but it's not gonna be in our neighborhoods, it's not gonna be on our parks, it's not gonna be on our waterfront. Um, it's gonna be, maybe, we've got 125 acres of industrial land. There are 125 acres. It's a lot of land that we can, um, yes? That's a good question, and that's something that I... There, there is no ratio, there is no law. And that's why I hate establishing a cap that our city says, "Look, we're in a cabin, it is." And then we're gonna say, "You gotta eat that one." I don't know, you know, there is no law, and so, if we make laws, establishing a cap, probably the first city in the country would do it. I'm serious. I'm believing that. We didn't mess with it with what we had, we don't have a cap, um, and I don't know if anybody else has a cap. I reviewed all the lawsuits in state, and none of them had a cap. So, if we can reapply the cap, we'd be the first town to make the service of, we're gonna make a cap, and we get taxed for that. We don't have a cap, what does that mean, we don't have a cap? So, I've got a four cap. Um, any other questions, yes, to the chairman?
Yeah, I appreciate you guys' picture of all of those folks.
Thank you. Oh, okay. What, what do you think, that I've done all, Rich Shole and the city council did a great job of that? Uh, and if you saw if you made any work on that, and they did a great job of that. Have we, have we been able to do that? Pardon? What you could do tomorrow is go to the city council meeting, and listen, and just make sure, it's at 2:00 tomorrow, and make sure that you know, not in our, not in our neighborhoods, not in our, not on our streets, not in our fire schools, not on our waterfront. And same thing this petition says, that we know it's a tough decision, we know it's imperfect. But we want you to understand that when you're gonna make this tough choice, we want it contained away from our community. Where we, it's not gonna affect us where we live, it's not gonna affect us where we're created, it's not gonna affect us when we go to get our calmness, when we go to the parks, it's not gonna affect where our children play. So, that's what we, we loud clear out of the city council. Yeah, and then Rex Center has a police officer, it's, but I have a police officer. Adam, Adam, Adam. Yeah, Adam. Yeah, but there'll be new police station across. Yeah, alright, uh, Dave, first? The federal state, uh, I think there's a lot of federal state laws, I've already just rolled it down the city, city, you know, but I was thinking that's a bit, but I don't have it. I don't give them there anymore, it's, it's, but I think, so, we can ask for money. But I can say as a business owner, business owners in the city, saying, "No, this is," are actually responsible for the sidewalk in front of the house, for the, for the buildings. So, if you have somebody, like, in the air, let's say, three people, and one of them breaks under his window, one of them kills somebody, one of them hurts somebody, suddenly, you as a business owner, since you're liable for what goes on in front of you, you cannot be liable for sending out the message, but also be liable for their actions. And what would you convince people, "Well, this is legal for letting me be there, I, I can't do anything, I totally got it, he said it's legal." And then, when I ask, after a day, and, um, I ask him, "Please do nothing." And now, your insurance is back, because somebody got hurt, and then now, you're getting dragged into a court lawsuit. Uh, Ken? Um, okay, I, I suggest that we supply water, just because, but I don't think we have to, to compare the water with them. I don't think that's necessary. I do think we should supply water, because...
You said that, you know, on your school, students, residents, and all areas, you're not able to, you want more, you said?
That's correct.
Okay, so, is everyone asking for water?
Yes. They're working on, but they can't go to the street, if you have those stuff, they stop there more than they can. That's what we need to do to the council. I, I put an example of a footprint there, and so, the question's gonna be, wherever the law is going, the council may say, "Look, choose, and we will adopt it, and then we'll just gonna work on it." Yeah, there's no good, there's no perfect choice, because, uh, you know, say, if our real property, number one, they want to develop it. I mean, literally, they've prepared negotiations. Um, the law does not allow a lot of these at all. The law allows much by, that's 100 foot by 100 foot by, that's our only place we can camp. You don't think we can anywhere, but then that's fine. Yes. All are here, all. What we do is identify a spot, this is where you can go, all the rest of the places you can't. You can't camp. Correct. Well, they're thinking about allowing places by, or, that's, you know, I can tell you this, the municipal census is all on the land, and so, that would be right by the water, right by the creek, right by Dalton Lake. Okay, first? Um, okay, other thing is, um, the question is, what about cars and RVs? You know, is there some kind of dating and affability that's gonna happen with those cars and RVs, and it's gonna be...
I mean, now, uh, you know, how...
And then you register, and that's, we're also getting that for you. So, these people are leaving, and I said, "What can you do?"
They didn't do it, because...
Show up tomorrow, 2:00, city council meeting, bringing the petition, more people to show up, and watch them. And so, I could say, a lot of these folks are entering.
So, yeah, wasn't gonna be like that.
Their signatures are on the piece of paper, and they don't need to come up and talk to you.
So, so, yeah.
If you're making some decisions, you can be here for hours. I can tell you, I spent hours with everyone Tuesday night, and the signatures are...
I don't imagine that that's gonna...
Um, any other questions? Wait, as you're leaving, wait a second, one more thing, one second. Please, if you want to make a donation to Saint Frederick Catholic Church on your way out, go ahead, just sit there, take a record for a while. Anything will help. Um, you know, I, I'm not paying for this venue, but I don't want anyone to back. I just would like a donation to the church. Thank you very, thank the church very much. It's a very recently christ cursed, it would be very hard to set up this.
Thank you.
But thank you, Father, for allowing us to use your facility and talk about this. Any other questions?